Now, six oh one. I call to order the City of King City Council, uh, six oh one on September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Recording in progress.
Thank you for those, uh, joining us by Zoom. Thank you for, uh, joining us from wherever you are. Uh, Mr. Weston, can you please give us a roll call?
Counselor Peterson.
Yeah.
Counselor Chilly.
Yeah.
Counselor Manel.
Here.
Counselor Thompson.
Here.
Counselor Paulson.
Here.
Counselor Moore is online.
Here.
And Mayor Fender.
Here.
All right, thank you. We will move on to the approval of the minutes. It looks like we have minutes from April nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three. Has everyone had a chance to review? So I will entertain the motion. The motion to approve the minutes from April twenty twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. There's a second.
Second.
Thank you. All those, uh, in favor, raise your hand. And Counselor Moore, perfect. The minutes are approved. Moving on to, uh, open forum. At this time, the council would be happy to receive your comments pertaining to items on the agenda, with the exception of public hearings for which testimony will be received and conducted in the proper form and manner at the time of the hearing, including questions, suggestions, complaints, and items for the future. Each person's time will be limited to three minutes. And I believe we are going to take, uh, comments from, uh, from Zoom. And we have, uh, Mr. Logan Meyer.
Lloyd.
Lloyd, I apologize, Mr. Lloyd Meyer.
Lloyd Meyer.
Go ahead and unmute. Yes, hello, sir. Please, uh, sit here, we can hear you. Uh, state your name and place your address on the record, and then you will have three minutes.
Very good. Dear Mayor and City Council members, good evening. My name is Lloyd Meyer. I grew up in Tiger, but currently I live in Beaverton. However, I own some property off of one hundred forty-seventh and Beef Ben Road. I have been following closely the King City annexation plans, and I want to thank two people in particular, Mike Weston and Ronnie Smith, for encouraging the widest possible public participation throughout the process. When the concept plan was first issued back in two thousand and fourteen, I was aghast that the map showed roads running right across my property. While I learned later that these were only proposed routes, I still felt very uneasy about King City releasing a public document showing these routes. So I got involved. I began to attend King City's public meetings. I testified at Metro. I became involved with Washington County's Citizen Participation Organization Number Four. I even served as Vice President of that CPO Number Four for a couple of years. So we've dealt with the transportation issues for several years now. So I personally think it's time to roll up our sleeves and get to work. Creating a city takes much more than building roads and infrastructure. It's time to plan for medical facilities, museums, theaters, and churches. What kind of connection will the new King City have with the outside world? What kind of skyline will King City have? What kind of businesses can we attract? Is King City's workforce trained to work in the businesses of tomorrow? Will King City be ever seen as a travel destination? How about King City's government leadership and enlightened citizen leadership? Are they ready for the challenges of tomorrow? Or are we embroiled in petty squabbles? We're better people than that. Let's work together to create something unique. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Is there, Ronnie, any other individuals on Zoom who would like to provide comment? All right, at this time, we are open to public comment here in the room. Uh, again, uh, you would have three minutes. Do we have anyone who's registered to speak at open forum? Anyone want to speak?
Not during the open forum, I don't think.
Okay. We will move on from open forum to new business. So, uh, ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we have scheduled a legislative land use hearing related to the adoption of amendments to the King City Community Development Code Title sixteen and Municipal Code. The hearing format in, for this proceeding is different than quasi judicial land use proceeding, though members of the public provide testimony in the same manner. Members of the public may participate in person, in writing, or both. We ask that a copy of all written materials be submitted to our city clerk, who is Ronnie Smith, uh, so that they can be made part of the record of the proceeding. The grounds for an appeal of a legislative decision are contained in ORS Chapter one nine seven, specifically ORS one nine seven six two zero. Again, that's ORS one nine seven dot six two zero. Following a staff report, we will be taking public testimony. For in-person testimonials located at the back of the council room is going to be your hearing and comment registration form. If you haven't, if you haven't picked up one, please go and dress one, uh, write your name, and fill out all other fields. It's a great time to remind everyone to turn your phones on silent, please, and for those on Zoom to keep yourselves on mute. For testimonials via Zoom, please write your name, address, and, uh, and whether you are in support, in opposition, or neutral in the comment section so that it will indicate it to, uh, city recorder, uh, Ronnie Smith. Names will be assigned a number in the order that, uh, Mr. Smith receives the comments in the chat box on Zoom. When I call your number, please give your hearing comment registration form to the city recorder, identify yourself, state your address, and make your statement. The maximum time allotted will be three minutes. What we try to do is we will have, uh, we will confiscate Counselor Manelis's iPad and try to put up the timer so that you can see the timing, uh, as you speak. Okay? Uh, and we will diligently stick to the three minutes. Uh, but we'll give you a little grace period to wrap up your sentence. All right. So for that, I now call the public hearing regarding case number LU dash two zero two three dash zero four. Uh, it is six oh eight P M on September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Open. All right. Ronnie, you want to start in this room?
Need to do a reading of the ordinance.
I think we should. Let's do a reading of the ordinance and then, um, we will go through, I'll go through the next preamble. Let's do that, all right?
So, uh, forgive me if I start breaking up or whatever, I didn't pull, but I'll try to get through this. Ordinance twenty-three dash zero four, an ordinance considering many filed twenty-three oh four, amending the Title sixteen Community Development Code and other municipal code elements. Whereas the city is proposing amendments to the King City Community Development Code to align with Kingston Terrace Master Plan, climate-friendly, and equitable communities and state federal law. And whereas these amendments are necessary to ensure development compliance within the Kingston Terrace Master Plan, policies, King City Compromise Plan Amendment, and King City Transportation System Plan Policy. And whereas the city provided notice of the hearing before the planning commission and City Council of the proposed acknowledgement amendments as required by state law, including notice to Department of Land Conservation and Development prior to the initial evidentiary meeting consistent with ORS one nine seven point six one zero. And whereas on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, the King City Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of the proposed Community Development Code amendment. And whereas on September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, the City Council of King City held a public hearing to consider the planning commission's recommendation, their public testimony, applicable decision-making criteria, and to consider appropriate findings and inclusion in supportive adoption. Whereas based upon the recommendations, evidence, and public testimony already in the record, and the evidence and testimony presented at the September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, the City Council public hearing, where substantial evidence exists within the record demonstrates the proposed Title sixteen Community Development Code, including the map, meets the local, regional, and state law department as the staff or recommended findings and conclusions. Now, therefore, the City of King City ordained to follow. Section one, amendments to the Title sixteen Community Development Code is amended, as shown in Exhibit A, attached tier two. Section two amendments, King City Municipal Code is amended, as shown in Exhibit B, attached tier two. Uh, section three, severability clause, any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, paragraph, proportion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction, such portion shall be deemed a separate, distinct, and independent provision, and such holding shall not affect the viability or validity of the remaining portions hereof. Section four, the defective data disorderant shall be three days after its adoption. Read the first time on September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and move to second reading by roll call of the City Council.
My correction, the date of...
That.
The, the date that you just read at the very end?
Today, September twenty.
Oh, I heard, I heard you say September twenty-three, twenty twenty-three.
Twenty of September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Perfect, I just want to clarify. Thank you. Thank you for that. All right. So as, uh, stated previously, this is a legislative hearing, so we don't follow the strict ex-party disclosure requirement. However, does any member of the audience or on Zoom wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the city council to hear this matter? Any indication on Zoom? All right. Hearing none, uh, we will move on. Does any member of the city council want to disclose any actual or potential conflict of interest? Okay? Uh, we'll just give... Counselor Moore, I'm taking the fact that you do not have a hand indicated on Zoom that you do not wish to declare a, uh, a conflict, however, please indicate...
That's correct.
Right now.
That was correct.
Thank you, all right. So hearing none, we will move, uh, we will continue to move forward. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any individual member of the city council, either in the room or on Zoom? Hearing none, uh, we will proceed. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that if you fail to raise an issue in person, on Zoom, or by letter, or in any other written form today, or to the city, uh, council, uh, you will be unable to raise that issue at a subsequent, uh, at a subsequent appeal to the city council, or at a subsequent time on appeal to the land board, uh, the Land Use Board of Appeals. So essentially, you must raise your issue that, uh, you want to raise today in person or in written form. Testimony and evidence must be directed to the criteria that staff will describe or other criteria in the plan or land use code which you believe, which you believe apply to the decision. Failure to specifically address the approval criteria that staff will describe also precludes the raising of an issue related to that or those criteria on appeal. At this time, I call for the staff to present the proposal along with the application, uh, with, along with the applicable approval standards and to make a recommendation to the council. Thank you.
Line, yeah. Do you want to say anything?
No.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Keith Wyden, I'm the contract planner of the city. Uh, I'm just going to run through a few slides to give you an overview of, of the proposal. We have, uh, code amendments that apply, uh, citywide, uh, parts of it, uh, only to the Kingston Terrace area, which is the western portion of the map, and some of it applies, uh, to the remainder of the city as well. Uh, and as you're well aware, we've had a series of, uh, plan and code amendments of dealing with Kingston Terrace so far. Uh, some of these have also been, uh, citywide changes to the Conference of Plan. We have a Transportation System Plan that was recently adopted, applied citywide, uh, but, uh, certainly to the majority of the area. And, uh, have had some community development, uh, amendments. And there are specific community, uh, requirements related to Kingston Terrace Master Plan and its implementation. And there's a proposal for a new, uh, chapter in the Community Development Code, uh, sixteen one one four, which would be dealing, uh, specifically with Kingston Terrace. Uh, and then also we have, uh, development-specific requirements that are in these, uh, code amendments relating to annexation, development agreements, uh, how developments are reviewed in the Kingston Terrace area. The process will be a little different than it has been for the remainder of the city. And, uh, also a focus on provision of adequate public facilities and services for this new area. Next slide, please. The, uh, code amendments for the Kingston Terrace area are directly, uh, intended to implement the master plan. And the master plan had four main things that were, that were items to be, uh, that were important. Uh, one was to create a new town center, walkable neighborhoods, providing a good range of and mix of housing for a range of incomes, uh, natural resource protection, and, uh, ensuring the provision of adequate public facilities and services. Next slide. Um, oh, yes, sir. Um, okay. Um, Exhibit A has the Kingston Terrace provisions in the new chapter one one four. We also have some amendments in sixteen twenty-four to sign in tree definitions. Article two procedures have been amended slightly mainly to, um, introduce what we, want to describe what we do now in three, uh, excuse me, four types of decision, uh, procedures. One is called Type One, which is for administrative things like building permits, sign permits. Uh, second is for city manager decisions that, um, there's mail notice. Oh, I'm losing my voice. Excuse me. At three, which are the quasi judicial, go before planning commission, and type four, which is more due tonight for later. We have, um, those described more clearly. Uh, some miscellaneous changes in Article four, testation vision plans and signs. And then we've got a place on chapter one ninety-two for annexation, and we have, uh, requirements for annexation, particularly can be an important, uh, aspect of what we're doing coming up. Okay, Ronnie, makes sense? Uh, Exhibit B is, as Mike said, uh, it really deals with the municipal code and some other changes that are, uh, others than system development charges and not really directly related to the terrace. Those are really mostly, uh, because we characterize as housekeeping. Next slide, please. Your package also had two other exhibits, Exhibit C's comments to the city council. Then also Exhibit D, which are comments that were received previously. They didn't make a difference. Fine. Come back to the CDC amendments, uh, Community Development Code amendments for Kingston Terrace. Have a unique approach for, uh, requirements, uh, land use requirements here. We have what's called a regulating plan, which is much more specific than you usually find in, in, well, you don't find it really in the rest of the city because people come in, they pretty much have a blank slate, and their only requirements relate to the zoning, you know, what kinds of uses that they have. And this is much more specific than that. Uh, and we have four different zones that you can see, uh, the progress locations just by the colors. Town center being the darkest color on the west side. Uh, the next higher density zone will be along Beef Ben Road, uh, in the, in the orange color. Then the lighter orange color would be the central neighborhood. Then the lightest one is the rural character neighborhood, uh, over the next of the cities that we have now. Next slide, please. Some of the key differences here with regulating plans is there's a lot more specificity in the street alignments and where things are supposed to go. Uh, the street alignments are not absolutely locked in a specific location, but pretty close. They're only supposed to vary by, uh, maybe up to a couple hundred feet from what's shown here. And as developments come in, that's when the, uh, specific alignments will be set. Um, we have a street design connectivity requirements to help ensure that we get what is called for in the, in the master plan and regulating plan. Other parts and open space requirements by neighborhood which reflect what's called for in the master plan. And, uh, I mentioned the CDC amendments previously about lands that we have, so. Fine, please. One of the changes that we have here for Kingston Terrace is, uh, how we're regulating, uh, upland habitat areas. So on this map, uh, that is in the, in the code, um, the light appearing areas that are currently regulated by clean water services. So this is, we would propose that that continues. And then the areas that you can see in kind of the light tan and the brown tones, those are the upland habitat areas that are, uh, a new regulatory tool. It's a part of, uh, the Kingston Terrace. And the idea here is to be protecting some of these upland areas that are complementary to the urban areas and for this overall, uh, habitat and, uh... Next slide. Uh, one additional thing that we have, uh, provisions of, uh, protection of weapons. And, uh, I think Mike and Peter will probably elaborate a little bit where we are with, uh, well, W Y and our, our conversation with the state. But there are proposed to be some weapon regulations, uh, for the Kingston Terrace. Some of these, the expectation would be, uh, considered prior to development. And then through the annexation process, there'd be some, uh, permits to just get that, get that, sort of, weapon, words. Uh, and then finally, we have a proposed section in Kingston Terrace, uh, for, uh, what's called Gold-Placed State Harbor Review for these here. Next slide. Okay. Turning to development, uh, the, the four rectangles of mobility, land use public and use of natural resources that you see, uh, left, uh, that comes from the master plan. Uh, annexation is being the obvious first step. Development and review. Then in some cases, land divisions would also be part of those. We have, um, annexation agreements that are a feature in the code amendments to King City and the prospective developer, what the intended land uses are, uh, and just really get, uh, clarifying what the city and developer obligations are by finding what infrastructure, uh, transportation, mobility, facilities, parks, and so forth. It's really just starting to develop an understanding of who's doing what and, and which is our performance, parties in the process. So we go to development plan review, and again, we would be looking at the, uh, regulating plan for, for guiding, uh, these places. Uh, we would have some, uh, standards, moving and element design, street circulation standards, parks and open space requirements, um, habitat conservation areas are the upland habitat areas that I mentioned earlier. Whatever, our, my... Then, uh, as part of this development land review, there would be a more specific development agreement that really derves in on exactly, uh, how it's specific. I think that's part of the developer. Mike, please? This just gives, uh, sort of an overview of some of the different standards that we have that I've talked about a little bit, that the dimensional standards, you know, circulation, design for the building and entries and street frontage and, and those sorts of things. Uh, development standards for parks and trails, upland habitats that I talked about. Next slide. Uh, land division is often a component, and, uh, those would be processed as part of the development. We have. Next slide. The recommendation is to review the exhibits, uh, A through B, for any public and agency comments you receive, and then...
Is there any question for me?
I have a question, I'm not sure if it's for you or if it's for the, um, city staff, but on Exhibit B, when it's talking about the noise level, it looks like they're being changed significantly. Why is that?
Because we went through, and we're making it so it's more in line with our surrounding neighbors, and actually something that's reasonable. Our numbers before, uh, weren't even above a whisper. So the forty-five decimals we're breaking at right now. So, um, we went and looked around to our neighboring communities on what was a reasonable, uh, number, and we took it from Tiger, Walton, Beaverton, and Hill Grove and Keith, just all the numbers that we looked at. And kind of came up with the average of, uh, more vibrant communities and enough what we're recommending. Uh, this was something that our colleagues had brought up as being, um, an untenable situation for enforcement purposes.
Any other questions, uh, Steve at this time?
Yeah, I have questions on, um, parking.
And I, and I guess as a point of order to clarify, is this our point?
Is... Yes.
Mike, do we save our questions until we hear? Is, is this, now is the appropriate time? Okay, that was my question, thank you. Okay, all right. Perfect, please.
Um, yeah, so on table sixteen point one one four dash one three, on pages sixty-three and sixty-four.
Okay. Pages sixty-three and sixty-four, uh, the staff report or the package?
Um... Exhibit A, um, I don't know, the draft title, Community Development Code Amendment.
Exhibit sixty-four, okay.
So for single-family, attached, detached, duplex, triplex, fourplex, residential care, manufactured home and mobile home, maximum vehicle parking, it says not applicable.
Mm-hmm.
So there's no parking requirements for single-family...
There's no vehicle requirement at all because we are precluded from doing so by the state. Mike, you want to explain that a little further?
Yeah. Uh, the new law that passed under the climate-friendly and equitable, uh, initiative basically, uh, requires all cities... Oh. It, uh, does not permit cities to require parking.
But, but you said require parking on commercial categories, is that, or actually, multi-dwelling groups with one point five spaces per unit for a studio and one bedroom? And then, uh, two or more bedrooms with two point two five spaces per unit?
And they said a little bit, like, Myers saying that they're not allowed to.
Well, these are, these are maximums.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, it's maximum, so there's no minimum.
No minimum, okay.
Yeah.
Done for now, thanks.
Counselor Moore, I'm just going to let you know, uh, we will just rely on you to indicate any questions or comments that you want to have by, uh, raising your hand, which we can see. So, uh, go ahead and let us know if you have any comments or questions at this time. Um, otherwise, we will just take your silence as none.
Thank you, I, I do... I, I do have questions, and again, I'm not sure if this is the right time, but we can, um, we can table my question if it's not the right time for this one, okay?
Our, our city, our city attorney has confirmed this is the appropriate time for your question, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I noticed on September sixth, the City of Tigerd, um, gave us a very, very comprehensive list of comments and suggestions, and I'm wondering which of those have been... have been considered and to what extent. I spot checked a couple, and I see that some of the suggestions were incorporated into the plan presented to us, but I'm, uh, wondering what the process was for that. Cause there's, there was an awful lot in there.
Yeah. So the planner from Tiger did a pretty extensive review and, uh, chimed in with a number of suggested amendments in those. Uh, we sat down with our planning and legal staff and incorporated the ones that we felt were reasonable and made sense and were good logic. And, uh, if, a lot of it was just minor housekeeping things for consistency. When you go through, uh, Skylar's notes, you'll see a lot of those are just, uh, keeping consistency throughout the document. And so those were easy grammatical fixes that we incorporated throughout that. And the new version that is in your packet should reflect those amendments.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
We addressed virtually every comment and, and changed it. So a lot of them were detailed and were good comments. Uh, I, I think maybe about the only one that we didn't do is he recommended that we should use the word must. And since we've used the word shall everywhere else in the code of city, now we're going to use the word shall. But, I mean, most of his comments are very detailed and, uh, they were very helpful. A lot of them are S R L and we did, I go through. Uh, we did have a response. It was written up that I went through each comment as to what happened, but I, I just somehow didn't make it into the packet.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's really helpful. And I, I am appreciative that you gave, uh, Tiger the opportunity to look over this because I think that it, it was nice to have that, um, other set of eyes on there. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah. One of the things that the staff is recommending today is to use this hearing to, uh, October or, which would be a special meeting in October. And, uh, we're recommending that so that we have a little more time to get some more input from our state agency partners and try to incorporate it like we did with the, uh, city of Tiger in that situation. So, um, our hope is that we can reach, uh, a reasonable conclusion with them. I think, uh, Mr. Watson and I have a meeting with those agencies on...
Monday?
Yeah, Monday, uh, yeah. What was it? Yeah.
I think it's just one to two.
Uh, so we plan to meet with them and try to incorporate any additional comments in that. Um, one of the reasons that it took us so long to get from planning mission to you is because of the, um, a lot of the Gold Five State Harbor pieces that, uh, we knew were coming, that we were working on and just weren't quite finished at the planning mission. And so we told planning mission that we need to, uh, bring that forward. And so with their recommendation, they recommended, uh, approval with the knowledge that there'd be further amendments, especially to the Gold Five addition. So those came forward now and not just being presented to you. Uh, the Gold Five State Harbor piece, I think is on page, starts on page nineteen of your, uh, packet for the municipal code amendment. There are other little housekeeping pieces in there, the annexation component. Uh, we got, we're in like a loophole somehow with the O, Oregon administrative rules and, uh, revised, and the O R S is organized statutes where, uh, the O A Rs require a lake and wetland inventory, uh, for an area to be brought into the urban growth boundary. But, uh, our area was brought in through a metro process. And so we got together with all the state agencies and metro and everybody at the very beginning when we started scoping this. And throughout that whole process, it was never brought up that we were going to need to do a, uh, lake and wetland inventory. Um, because just in the planning, we're not changing any uses. We're not changing what's allowed on the property until it's actually annexed and city zoning is applied. Then the uses are changed. And so at that point in time, the city would need a local wetland inventory for the areas that are annexed. So what we're trying to figure out is, uh, what this code does is it allows us to adopt the lake and wetland inventory as we annex these parcels. Uh, but what would be beneficial, I think, in the long run would be to do a lake and wetland inventory for the whole area.
Right. Uh, one of the reasons that we didn't do that is because we need, well, A, nobody told us that we needed to do it at this point. Um, and, you know, everybody reviewed the scoping of, of the planning that we were doing. Um, but also because we need the owner's permission in order to get onto the site. So if, if you, I mean, we can't trespass on people's property. And, uh, there, there are some things that you can use aerial lapse to get really accurate data. Uh, but lap lens particularly, ones that are seasonal in nature, I mean, it's just really hard to see, to determine from an aerial photograph what those are. It really, I think the best practice is to be on-site observing them, doing all that stuff.
Especially with ground cover, like, you know, vegetation and, and that, that you would want more accurate data, right?
Yeah. And so the, the plan, our plan has been to do that. It's a, it's a, it's the time of the application for annexations. That would be part of the list that people would be checking. Um, there are, are some large property owners that own tracks on the western portion that, you know, based on, um, how the process could go, let the Department of State lands in advance and got what's called delineation for their parcels. So those have already been through the entire review by the Department of State lands, et cetera. So we know with certainty, um, what's on those parcels because the owners have permit, obviously provided their own experts with permission. So it creates this kind of interesting, um, kind of interesting issue where we have some parcels with delineation, some parcels where we will have permission to go on and do mapping or our experts will be able to do. But, um, and then some parcels where we don't expect to receive permission. So it's just a question of if we want the most accurate maps possible, what's the vehicle kit that we can use to get there? Uh, we thought we had agreement between everyone kind of through the end of June. And then we've had some people question, okay, well, why are you doing something more expansive now? And so the conversation, and again, Wilsonville who's completed their process, all aspects of it, and they came in at the same time that we did, they haven't updated their, uh, local well and inventory since nineteen eighty-nine. And so they've had multiple U G B expansions during that point, um, during that, that time, including the most recent one. So what the conversations that we want to have with the state is how can we have a process that is as fair to everyone as possible, that ensures that we have the most accurate maps? So we are protecting those wetlands. And if, if we're relying on kind of the property owner's representation, you know, it's really hard to verify. And, and some people might be interested in saying there is a wetland because, you know, that can, that can impact developability too. Um, just it's, there are a variety of reasons why we really would like independent verification as part of that application process. Um, and so those are the conversations that hopefully we will be having on Monday. And then we're kind of doing a dual track. We want to keep things moving along. Um, and we don't, I don't necessarily agree with some of the interpretations that have been recent. And again, I point to Wilsonville and Scathus who, um, I represented during the U G B expansion. We didn't do an L W Y. Uh, we, we relied on a lot of the time with annexations. That's what all of that became. Um, but, you know, that's kind of a conversation we'll be having and, and hopefully by October fourth, we'll have an answer. And that's why we're recommending after you take public testimony, that we continue to that date certain. And hopefully then we'll have the answers from, uh, T L C D. And we're, we're working on, our meeting on Monday is going to be with pretty high level staff. So certainly people will come in and just say...
Thank you for that. Do we have other comments or questions from the council at this time?
The only thing I just remembered was for the, I don't know if it would pertain to this, uh, would be the, the air park, the overlay, the language. Does that be in this or is that something separate?
So we, in our call plan, we, we put a placeholder in. I have not, I've heard from Mr. Myers, attorney, on that and shared some language with him and asked some questions like how often is it used, how many aircraft, et cetera, so that we can have kind of some appropriate, you know. And I, we haven't received all the information back yet and as well, uh, cause that, that will be pretty restrictive on that property once that overlay is finished. So we want to make sure that all that information and they're happy with it.
Okay.
We, we basically put a placeholder in the call plan for an airport overlay that could be adopted within that area than, than if necessary.
If, if it's annexed, I mean, we can't put an overlay on property that's on, in this city.
Other comments or questions? Mike, anything else, uh, regarding staff report or should we move on now?
This is, it's a goal reading. I, I, I know. And it's a lot to take.
It's a lot.
But it's also, uh, very applicable to ensuring that development meets our community standards and meets the policies that were formulated throughout the community engagement of the master plan, the transportation system, and ensuring that, uh, the homes are the right size, ensuring that the, uh, densities are correct, that the glazing, the siding, the facing, the solar access, the view sheds, all these elements are, you know, being captured in these code languages. And so, um, as you review them, if you have questions on how that's going to apply, uh, we'll be happy to, uh, try to address those for you.
Good.
I'll keep my comments. All right. Uh, all right. So at this time, does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? Are any, um, all right.
I have a question, but I'm not sure.
Why don't you all, oh, well, I guess we need to clarify before we move forward. So... Okay. Does any member of the audience wish to speak, uh, in opposition to this application? We will take first those in, uh, the room here. Um, do we have cars or numbers? Do you have all of them? Do you want to...
I have, uh, Randy Olson.
Right? Mr. Olson, if you can come up to the podium, please? All right, Mr. Olson, we are going to have Mr. Manelis be the timekeeper. Let's figure out a timer for you. And then that way, uh...
I'll kind of hold it up here so you can see it.
So you can kind of see. And we will just, um...
Give me a twenty-second warning.
Yeah, no, when we start talking, I'll, I'll give you a, a few seconds to go and then we'll get it going.
Well, I want to get to two minutes and forty seconds.
Oh, okay. Maybe I'll...
We absolutely, we will absolutely do that. Uh, also, I, I don't think it's fair that your name and your address be counted as your time. So I typically, well, they do that and that gives us all a little time to kind of go on and give you a little grace of a few seconds.
I'll give you three for thirty seconds.
And then can I ask a, a question?
You may.
It's not part of my three minutes. I just, uh, uh, it's inappropriate to call you Peter.
You can call him Peter. I've been called a while.
I understand directly that the goal on the airport overlay, that Mike Weston will be happy with it.
You mean, Ms. Ira?
Sorry.
He's looking at, yeah.
We want, we want him to understand the scope of it. This is really unique for an overlay for an airport that size. So, um, we pulled, we pulled some language from larger airports of that it's very restrictive on future development. So we would, we would want, first of all, we, it would not be applicable until you annex it in the city if ever. Um, but then we would, understanding that we've left this placeholder and that's the only airport, that it needs to be reasonable in scope, but we would want him to be comfortable with it. Otherwise, I don't know why if ever he would annex it in the city. Kind of not if he wouldn't, he might be.
The goal is he would be comfortable.
Yeah. And we would, we, we, if people are asking for specific zoning or overlays for them, we want to work, we want to make sure it works with the current level of use and that, you know, within reason. I mean, you know, if somebody wants something that gives them legality, then you can't give it to them legally.
Thank you.
All right. Let's proceed and state your name, your address for the record, please, and then your, your comments. You will have three minutes.
Uh, I'm Randall Olson. My address is one-three-five-oh-nine Southwood Kinglyer Way here in King City. Um, good evening, Mayor Fender and councilors. I will be very brief. Um, I did start by adding living at, uh, that first ravine on, uh, the Bangston Nature Preserve. Put a bridge across it. It'll be three hundred and fifty feet long and will be fifty feet above the ground at the highest point. It's going to be a big bridge. Um, in creating the development plan, I encourage the city council to protect the Tuolton River watershed, the sensitive class one riparian zones, the upland habitats and the Bangston Ne, Nature Preserve to the greatest extent possible. Not too late to avoid these and other potential problems by moving the Fisher Road extension and other damaging construction approximately four hundred feet north from its proposed location. Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you. All right. Next, uh, comments in opposition? Cause we have none.
I just have a question. I, I think it's for P. I saw on the map, um, I didn't see any designation for the Bangston Nature Preserve on those maps. I just can't see. Is there a reason for that?
And, uh...
I think we can. So one of our...
And can we clarify, to my knowledge, there is no Bangston Nature Preserve. Can we clarify the language?
There's a conservation easement on a portion of the...
Just here for the record.
Private conservation easement on a portion of the Bangston property. So one of our conditions was that, um, we protect that, um, conservation, private conservation easement. So we looked at the impact of the urbanization on that. And what we ended up doing was, I think, you know, this was all done in public hearing. We ended up putting a, a park, um, natural space designation on it, um, so that it will be protected. And that was done, um, in, right, in the call plan with Metro, um, in Cannon with Metro. Uh, of course, we were looking at this and, um, you know, uh, we're not protecting it from every element of urbanization. Hopefully protect it.
So I'm going to, a point of order. So at this time, I gave a little lenience for the, for the questions, uh, because this is a small community. It's hard not to, right? However, uh, this is not an appropriate time for questions and answers. This is a time for public testimony at a hearing. I welcome you to stay and, um, ask questions. Uh, I'm sure that both, uh, Peter and Mike would stay and ask, you know, answer questions if you want afterwards. But, uh, for this, we're going to move on. Do we have another testimony in opposition to, uh, to the plan?
Want to provide comment?
Yeah. I mean, you can come and provide three minutes of comment if you want.
Randy did a really good job.
Okay. Others in the room who would like to provide public testimony? Do we have people online who would like to... Thank you.
Good night, thanks.
Good night.
So you have, uh, Victoria Frankie online who wants to comment.
All right. So Ms. Frankie, when, uh, we are going to, can you see us okay on your screen?
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. What we will do, what we've done in the past, if, uh, assuming it is helpful to you, I will raise my arm when you have thirty seconds here on the timer in the room. And then we will, uh, if you're still talking, uh, we'll let you know that, uh, you know, time is up, but we'll give you a few seconds to kind of wrap up your last comment. So, uh, please place your name and address on the record and you will have three minutes.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Victoria Frankiny, and I'm the Riverkeeper and Staff Attorney for Tuolton Riverkeepers. Our paths have crossed several times and you've heard from me via written and oral testimony concerning our opposition to the Fisher Road extension. Now we ask the council not to adopt the proposed code amendment specifically for those incorporating the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. Now we ask the council not to adopt the proposed code amendments specifically for those incorporating the Kingston Terrace Master Plan and Transportation System Plan because a wetland inventory needs to be conducted prior to adopting any codes or plans which dictate land use in the Kingston Terrace area as required by state land use goal five. King City correctly states within the staff report that an updated local wetland inventory is due as recommended by the state. However, in the same report, the city incorrectly states that it is not required until prior to development and not necessarily prior to adoption of the code amendments. A natural resource inventory, including wetlands, is the first requirement under state law that must happen prior to adoption. Cities must have adequate information about each potential resource site to conduct the process determined by whether the local government has information providing the location, quality, and quantity of the resource. Without that information, the city cannot adopt a code that adequately addresses conflicting uses and protects natural resources in the area. Instead, what the city proposes is to kick the can down the road and this approach is contrary to state law. As stated, stated in previous letters and testimony to the commission, council, and staff, our concern arises out of concern for the health of the Tuolton River due to increased sediment load from surrounding development, which development within the Kingston Terrace area will only exacerbate. Wetlands will be the first line of defense in urban areas, controlling erosion and filtering pollutants before they can enter the river. Failure to properly identify existing wetlands could conflict with further requirements under state and federal law, including Army Corps and DSL dredge fill requirements. We encourage the city to look towards similarly situated growing cities such as Beaverton, who have already conducted a draft wetland inventory for the Cooper Mountain area, which they have not yet, uh, proposed their community plan for adoption. We further encourage the council to recommend informed decision-making moving forward by requiring a wetland inventory prior to adoption and adjusting the code amendments to reflect the vast natural resources in the area, including the Tuolton River and the tributaries. The code amendments for the Kingston Terrace area are missing a vital piece of information by not having an updated inventory that can best inform future development. Uh, thank you for your time. I will submit, uh, these written comments to Ronnie just so you have them for reference.
Wonderful. Thank you for your comments and, um, thank you for that submission of the written, um, the written testimony. All right. Others online who wish to, uh, speak in opposition to this application? All right, hearing none and last call for in the room. No? All right, we will move on to anyone who would like to provide neutral comments. Is there anyone in the room who would like to provide neutral comments? Seeing none, we will move on to online. Ronnie, do we have any neutral comments, uh, by any attendee who wishes to speak? No, all right, we will move on. Does staff any, have any rebuttal to any of the comments, uh, that we have heard this evening?
Yeah, I would just say, uh, in response to Ms. Frankie's, uh, comments about the L W I, like, uh, Mr. Weston and I were talking about earlier, there's two triggering events for an L W I, a precedent of an urban growth boundary, which would have been done, uh, prior to Metro, evaluating and expanding their urban growth boundary, or when, uh, city zoning is applied to the property. The master plan, the transportation system plan, the code language here, that does not change the uses on the property. Uses on the property, which is the triggering event, gets applied when the city applies the city zoning to the parcels that are annexed into the city limits. Uh, the urban growth boundaries are regulated by Washington County. So they're under Washington's, uh, wetland inventory. That would say I'm just here to. Are annexed into the city limits and in our jurisdiction, then we apply our little wetland inventory and they would have to apply with or comply with city zoning code ordinance and everything else. Until that moment, there's no triggering event to cause or create a lake and wetland inventory. Now, Beaverton did their lake and wetland inventory early in the process because they knew that there was going to be some system development charges that they were going to have to pay for. They wanted to get those out front and figure out what those numbers are going to look like. We keep that down with the state agencies in this process. And if we were going to need a lake and wetland, we were told that we weren't at that point in time. It's only recently that they said, well, you're going to need to put it in your code so that the lake and wetland inventory is actually, um, adopted essentially at the time of annexation. And so. Right, so their emails as late as late June, they discussed it for us, we're using. And then there is a, at least one employee at the L G D, um, who interprets this differently. And that's why, part of the reason we're having a meeting on Monday. And without getting too far into the weeds, so Metro was given the authority by the Oregon Legislature to develop their own, um, criteria consistent with state land use goals and they did it, the titles. So that's why we talked about having their team. And so throughout this, um, you know, again, with the scoping of all the studies we were doing, that was all Metro grant money. Metro staff was reviewing all of that. Um, we were in communication with state agencies about what we needed. And this was not flagged by any of our consultants, Metro staff, or state agencies in something. And again, we've been after this for six years. So, um, and we, because we're in Metro, we don't have the ability to U G B expansion. We have the ability to apply to Metro and Metro can do a U G B expansion. Their U G B expansion on ours. That's different than cities outside of Metro. So, um, the O A Rs that they're, the O A Rs that have been cited, those are applicable to a city that is doing a U G B expansion. The ones I've been involved in, we didn't do an L W I prior to the expansion. So, um, and I, and I understand that Hillsborough chose, if you have major riparian areas and you know you're going to have any S D Cs, only, but if, if not, then, um, yeah, we can give more acronyms and so if we know that there are people who want to sell their properties. And we know that there's riparian areas out there.
Sure.
But our intent was to identify those as natural areas and kind of preserve them as such. And I think that's what our upland, uh, our upland language talks about. And then we also depend on clean water services to regulate the actual, uh, wetland corridors. So, uh, those are the riparian, uh, riparian categories one and two that clean water services regulate. And then our upland habitat, uh, component that was done through, uh, title thirteen, yes, will essentially apply to the upland areas outside of those riparian corridors. So when we asked initially, we, when we asked in the very beginning, are we going to need a lake and wetland inventory? We were told that we were not going to need it because one, we didn't have access to everyone's property, two, we weren't, uh, applying city zoning at that point in time. Right, so the metro clinic staff in August of last year, so thirteen months ago. So, um, and, and again, if you're looking at the map, there are gaps in it. There's the colors and then you see gaps. And that's because those are either in the floodplain. So what we've basically said is if it's in the floodplain, it's not going to help. There are ways that people can develop in the floodplain through cut fill balances and FEMA, um, letter map provision, initial letter map provision, the whole process. The other jurisdictions are like, well, we'll allow you to develop in the floodplain. And what we basically said is if it's mapped in the floodplain, it's going to be mapped park slash open space. Um, the ravines and riparian areas, again, those are, those are, um, kind of gaps on the map that aren't orange or yellow or red. That's because those are, um, mapped out of development. And then the Bangston property as well, uh, to, to, to maximize its protection. It's, it's now that they, um, park slash open space. So there, there is no future urban development of housing. That, I mean, there might be a field there. There might be something else that serves the community, but it's not going to be housing. So that's why on that map, it looks like it's like navy blue. Cause we don't anticipate, we have to calculate net developable acres and whether or not those can be developed as housing is, is one of those things that we're looking at when we're doing that developable acres. And I think you'll see that on page, uh, four, page eighteen of your, uh, paper today.
Thank you. Other, other rebuttal before we move on to questions and comments from the council? Anything else that you wish to add?
At this point in time, I will say that there's probably a few more amendments. Just refining some of the language here and there. Um, and that's why we're asking for a continuance to October fourth.
Understood.
If the council's, if the council can do that, because that would be a special hearing day. It's not our usual day.
Right.
If you can't do October fourth, then you would have to die on the three.
All right. Um, at this time, do any councilors have any questions for staff? And again, Kate, I, I know I, I gave one, one statement, but assuming if you have a comment, we are just going to, uh, assume you will put, raise your hand on Zoom.
I appreciate.
I have a question.
I'm good for now. Thank you.
Go ahead. All right, thank you. Uh, I'm just curious, along the same lines of your experience with Kapoose and with, uh, with Wilsonville, what is the city of Tigard with River Terrace two point oh? Maybe Sherwood, what have we heard about some of the, these concerns, um, being raised with those cities? Cause to my knowledge, they haven't been, but.
So there, I, I think that, you know, the, the more wetlands or riparian areas you have, and so, um, they're citywide S D Cs and then there can be enhanced S D Cs for certain areas based on the geography or other factors. They're going to be particularly challenging for a city to provide an urban service. So one of, one of the, the, I, one of the things I've heard anecdotally, so I'm, I believe this is true, but I'm not certain it's true, is that with Cooper Mountain, there were some riparian challenges that people didn't understand at the beginning of the process. That had, and then property owners annexed and, and paid S D Cs. There are portions of that that were a lot more challenging and that haven't developed because of that, because they probably didn't need some enhanced S D Cs. They're going to have to use a trunk system and, and for clean water services and all that. So, um, if you're aware, and then, then there's been the second U G B expansion. And I can't remember if the first one was Cooper Mountain, South, South Cooper Mountain. The second one was Cooper Mountain, but where they flipped. But, um, I think that everyone was aware of the riparian issues during the second annexation and that probably was a factor in getting the L W I. I suspect the same thing for Hillsborough, uh, Wilsonville. As far as I know, again, based on the state's website, they haven't done an L W I since nineteen ninety nine. Um, Tuolton has done one since two thousand. They both have had U G B expansion. So again, I, well, part of what we're trying to do with this date on Monday is understand why we might need to do one over the next however many months versus at the time of the annexation, when you're usually dealing with all of the wetland, floodplain, all these type of specific issues that might make, uh, in other jurisdictions someone go, have to go to FEMA or have to go to a D L C D always reasons that. But, um, yeah, so we just, we need some answers and, um, hopefully then we can, when, on the fourth of the eighteenth, depending on when you're available, we can provide more specifics.
I look forward to, uh, hearing how that meeting goes.
And I just want to, I think Mr. Olson had provided a testimony that he recommended the road be made four hundred feet north from where we planned it. I would just say that by moving the road four hundred feet north, it puts you right into the middle of the drainage that's coming through there and those three or four big ravines that are just north. So instead of one crossing of that environmental, uh, area, you'd have four crossings. So the mitigation and cost mitigation, building three or four bridges across that would be exponentially more difficult. And we have written testimony from Ken Dawson that will be entering into the record.
Okay.
Date is September nineteenth, twenty twenty two.
Thank you. All right. All right. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question since we were talking about those maps, that one on eighteen, it's, um, figure sixteen dot one one four dash nine. I know it's hard to tell spacing because there's. Spatial, I couldn't figure it. But so I'm looking at like the gray areas, the natural resource area overlay, which looks like all of us. And then the yellow kind of comes down to the central neighborhood. Uh, would we? And because that, to me, that looks farther apart than even like the current river median. It looks like that section, the river, it looks like it's closer to the river than we would actually build in or, or.
Yeah, I mean, one is not, uh, you would have to zoom in with G I S to actually.
Okay.
See the topography on that. I mean, I can share my map here to give you an idea of what's on that there. Also have, what's identified in here are the lands outside of any upland. So no upland habitat is, is also, uh, not included in this, right?
Right, so all the gray areas that.
Yeah, so what they could do with upland habitat though, is that they could mitigate that upland habitat. So some of those gray areas could fill in. But based on the resource map and our resource baseline map that we had from the very beginning, those areas were identified as upland habitat. Now, not all of these are identified as, uh, wetland corridors. When you look at the, there's a more specific map that actually has, uh, the wetland corridors identified as blue and it has the upland habitat that is, uh, tan and brown. The tan is like the low quality upland habitat and then the brown was the, uh, higher quality upland habitat. And I'm trying to think about what pages you're.
Page one oh two in your package.
Thank you. Yeah, it's this one here. So it looks like this. And so the blue is, uh, what we identified as being those riparian corridors one and two, which would be regulated by clean water services. And then anything that's brown and tan would be regulated by us. And if you look at that map along with, uh, the map that shows the zoning, it, the zoning is only applied to the areas outside of those habitat areas. That's how we get our buildable land.
Buildable area.
And that's where we get our estimates on how many units we're getting.
Other questions? Any other questions in here?
I was just gonna ask if we can take a five or ten minute break, review this and.
Sure, well, we will take a five minute recess, uh, I'm gonna use mine. I'll take a five minute recess at seven oh nine and we will come back, uh, at seven, we'll do seven fifteen. All right. On Zoom, we apologize. We had a technical, uh, issue. We did come back from recess, uh, at, uh, a few minutes ago. To recap, we had no further questions or discussions and we are currently talking about when, if we were to continue, uh, this public hearing, to which date and the protocol surrounding, uh, notice and, and all of that. So, if you are tuning in now, you have not missed substantive or substantial commentary in here. But we will continue now with the discussion of, uh, the meeting. So we know for sure that, uh, Councilor Moore cannot attend. It sounds like everyone here in this room can attend, so we would have quorum for the meeting, um, on October fourth.
And then Counselor Moore would just need to review the audio and minutes of the meeting on October fourth to be able to participate.
Sure.
On October eighteenth. And so what our intention is, is to do a published notice just out in the Oregonian or I think it's Oregonian, right? Ronnie said we publish notice. And, and that's more of a courtesy notice to say that we're amending the guided amendments to the plan. Those include the Gold Five State Harbor piece and all that. And then hold the meeting on October fourth at six P M here at King City City Hall. And then that would allow us to take any additional testimony that may arise throughout that period. And then at that voting time, hopefully we receive all the testimony we're going to receive and the city council can close the public testimony. And I think technically you either deliberate it at that time or you can just continue it to October eighteenth. And then you could deliberate it and then conduct the second.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. All right, so at this time, I would ask for a motion. For motion, there we go.
Counselor Moore.
I, I do, I just, sorry, thank you. I just missed the part about why we need to have a special meeting and not resume at our, at our regular monthly meeting? Is it just to, for timeline reasons? Or is it to make the eighteenth a shorter meeting? What, what do we need to do here?
So the, the comment, I will just summarize, and if anyone else wants to jump in to correct me, then feel free. So the consideration is kind of tripeled. So one, it is because we have a date certain that we would be announcing tonight, it allows us to save on the postage of having to publish a new notice. So it is a little bit of a fiscal decision. Two, it is to allow the agenda on the eighteenth to not be oversaturated. And then also to allow us time to, between the fourth and the eighteenth, should we wish to take additional time to synthesize or deliberate on what was presented, to have that kind of additional time. So I, I think the staff recommendation, and I, and I would characterize it as strongly recommend that we keep the date certain on October fourth with our apologies to you because we know you cannot attend. And then that way we would deliberate either that night or kick it to the eighteenth at our regular meeting.
Well, and I think it was, we could do the, close it on the fourth and then have the second reading on the eighteenth.
And also correct, thank you, Counselor Moore.
I mean, technically, I believe the original provision requires two hearings, right? So, or, or two public meetings to discuss. So technically you could adopt it on October fourth. But my recommendation is that sometimes you get new information, evidence or testimony that happens on the day of.
Right.
And so it's best, in my professional opinion, to close the public testimony on that day and then give the council time to absorb.
Digest.
And digest the testimony and read through the additional material that was presented. So that way they can make an informed decision at the next.
There we go.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I appreciate it.
And we apologize, I, I, we did not, we were unaware that Zoom, the Zoom attendance or attendees were not listening. So our apology is to you and to others listening in on Zoom. All right. At this time then, I would entertain a motion.
I move, sorry, I move that we continue the public hearing for value number twenty-three dash oh four, Community Development Code Title sixteen, King City Municipal Code Ordinance number oh dash two, twenty twenty-three dash oh four first, sorry, not frustrating, to October fourth, twenty twenty-three at six P M.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded and we need a roll call vote for this one. So Mike?
I'll start with Counselor Moore since you're online.
Yes. Did you hear me? I said yes.
Yeah, we got it. Thank you.
Counselor Ochoa.
Yes.
Counselor Manalas.
Yes.
Counselor Thompson. Counselor Paulson.
Yes.
Mayor Fender.
Yes.
unanimous motion carries, therefore I declare this public hearing continued to October fourth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Thank you. All right, so now we are moving on to new business. And Keith, we thank you very much for your, your very hard work. I know I said it in the break, but just I want to take one moment to acknowledge the incredible amount of work that, that Keith has done over, well, the years, but specifically over the summer and in the last few months. And with not all the help that he thought he was going to get at the time. So thank you very much and, excuse me. Well, and we think, we do extend our, our, you know, our thanks and appreciation to your team. And also to those who volunteered their help too, so to the city of Tigard, and I'm sure there's several others. But please extend our heartfelt gratitude. So thank you. Have a great evening. All right, now moving on, okay. Item B, this is ordinance zero dash two zero two three dash zero five. And this is a request from the city manager. And we ask that you read the title of the ordinance and then we'll ask for you to present further, I guess.
This is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero five, an ordinance repealing ordinance number zero zero two dash zero five, creating a process for the development of reimbursement districts, chapter three point oh three, and replacing it with chapter three point oh three, advanced finance reimbursement system. Titles, whereas the city created a process for the development of reimbursement districts through ordinance zero dash oh two dash oh five. And as most recent youth city staff noted, that the need to repeal ordinance oh two dash oh five and replace it with more user friendly directions in chapter three point oh three, advanced finance reimbursement system. Whereas the council finds that the replaced ordinance adopting chapter three point oh three, advanced finance reimbursement system, public interest, now therefore the city is to follow ordinance number oh dash oh two dash oh five, creating a process for the development of reimbursement districts to repeal. And section two, King City Municipal Code three point oh three, advanced finance reimbursement system is adopted by the city council and attached as Exhibit A. Separability clause in any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, paragraph, or portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction. Such portion shall be deemed a separate, distinct, and independent provision of such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portion here. Effective date of this ordinance shall be effective thirty days after its adoption, read for the first time September twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, move to second reading by roll call. So what this ordinance does is essentially repeal what we had previously in the ordinance, which was to establish a reimbursement district. We found some constitutional problems with that when one of our residents attempted to buy for a reimbursement district and it was not valid in the manner in which it was applied. So we've been working with our engineers, Minister Smith particularly, and Paul Johnson with Contour have been working on this to try to get it up to date and up to speed. So these are the amendments that that would require for this advanced finance reimbursement system and allow for the city go through a process of establishing a reimbursement district. So there's a general contractor or a resident that develops their property and they invest a large sum of money into the infrastructure that supports that development. And an adjacent property is going to use that. They can form a reimbursement district over their property and get recouped for a portion of their infrastructure expenses. It's a way of making sure that everybody pays their fair share. And doesn't only just piggyback off the first person who goes through. If you read through this, there are portions of this code that address that. They address what portions are reimbursable, what portions are not. It has to be in the public good, it has to be infrastructure related. It has to be something that was required for a public improvement of the subdivision. Do you want to touch on anything else?
Yeah, first off, I want to thank Peter on this because Peter did a hundred percent of the work. So, you're credited too, we're credited too. Well, Johnson and I, we added, the only thing that we added in there was the definition of what qualifies as public improvement. So street trees, road, herbs, and gutters and stuff like that. So the other one that we used to have did not, wasn't very clear on what a public improvement was.
Yeah, I mean, the good news is I had done this for other jurisdictions. So it was really easy for me to pull language that I knew worked in another city because we had successfully used it several times. As I said, your current code was basically written for city improvements. So if the city were to construct a street, it would then allow adjacent property owners to develop. That could be reimbursed. It was written during the time when like the federal, federal and state governments paid for a lot of infrastructure. It wasn't really set up so that if one property owner developed it, then, and like within the next ten years or however long, the neighbor then used it and experienced significant savings. But then they would have to pay the original one. So the idea is you don't have to pay unless you develop, because there's some people that you don't want to develop. But if you, if it allows you to develop and you haven't paid for it and the owner number one has applied for it, then they would have to, they would be able to collect. Then those, I'm not going to say famous project, but, but a project where that kind of highlights this is if, if you're familiar with the Stafford Triangle, so north of I two oh five, there's a large church there called Rolling Hills Church. And there's a large roundabout right there. And it was the, it was the expansion of Rolling Hills and the traffic that is generated that caused for Clackton County Transportation, Transportation System Plan for that roundabout to be built. I think at the time it was built, the thought was that that land would develop, although it wasn't yet in the Orange County, it didn't. And so, but if it had developed, all of those adjacent property owners would, would have to pay for minimal transportation system plan expenses because of that roundabout. So that Rolling Hills would have been able to collect from those. Where you see it more often is if there's like a planned street and you have a property owner on one side who wants to develop and they have to, they have to improve the street. And then if the other person doesn't want to develop for the period of time, which I think is twenty years, then they don't have to pay. But if they do develop and they benefited from that first property owner, then they have to reimburse them. So that's how it's worked in other jurisdictions that I represented and that's why I'm in this debate.
Seems fair, right? Later in time, if you decide to change your mind or you sell and someone else purchases it, right? Then it.
Right, in, in, in other jurisdictions, when it was like a five year, sometimes it actually penciled for them to wait till the five year end of the day. And so, but if you're looking at something like a ten or a twenty year time horizon, it, it actually encourages development to happen sooner because someone has been delaying it for five or seven years to avoid paying, reimbursing the neighbor they might not like. They, they then just, you know, end up.
Right.
This percentage, right, pro rate, yeah, it's a pro rate percentage. So like if the next door is only doing two and you did twenty, well, you're going to do the twenty percent share and they're going to do the two percent share.
Great, thank you. Question? All right, so on the agenda, Mike, it says that the recommendation is to hear public testimony and consider and discuss approving or disproving.
An ordinance, so this is the first reading of the ordinance and then public hearing on it.
Okay.
So you would ask for any testimony.
Tonight? Okay. Yeah, because it's a, right, 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 right. Okay, I just want to, I just want to make clear that I'm, I just want to make sure I am doing the appropriate steps. So we will move on to any, is there any person in the room or on Zoom who wishes to provide testimony in consideration either for or against or neutral regarding ordinance or the proposed ordinance zero dash two zero two three dash zero five? We'll give a few moments to those wishing online to. Please raise your hand on Zoom if you would like to provide any testimony regarding this agenda item. Hearing none or seeing none, we will now move on to counsel. I will entertain either a motion or if you have questions, this is your time. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we, as we move to the second reading of the ordinance, oh dash twenty twenty-three dash zero five.
But I think what Counselor Paulson wants to do is move to close public testimony based on the fact that there is none. And then we wait for ordinance, we would have to wait until our next open session to conduct the second reading and deliberation.
All right. And before you do, do I have to formally open up? The fact that I asked for comments is fine, but do I, do I need to make a more formal process regarding testimony related to this agenda item?
No one provided it because they want to provide.
No.
Yeah.
Our ordinance, again, on the municipal code is kind of quiet on this.
Okay.
It just requires two hearings.
It just requires, right, so the process, right, I just want to make sure I'm not running afoul of any triggering language that I need. So therefore proceed.
I again state my motion with the amendments that Mike provided.
Perfect. So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. You want to do roll call, Mike?
Sure. Counselor Moore, I'll start with you since you're online.
Yes.
Counselor Thompson. Counselor Paulson.
Yes.
Counselor Manalas.
Yes.
Counselor Ochoa.
Yes.
With Petrie.
Yes.
Mayor Fender.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Empty.
And that will be on, that will be continued to October eighteenth.
Okay, to the regular.
So October eighteenth at six P M.
All right, so the second reading on ordinance zero dash two zero two three zero five will be on the next city council regular meeting, which is October eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
At six P M.
Two thousand twenty-three.
Twenty, two thousand twenty-three.
At this location.
All right, moving on the agenda, we now we have the Domestic Violence Awareness Month and we have a proclamation. You want me to read it? Sure, can I use your, I have though, my version is. Thank you. All right. So here is our proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender identities, socioeconomic levels, religions, backgrounds, beliefs. socioeconomic levels, religions, backgrounds, beliefs, and abilities, but often has a disproportionate effect on communities and groups impacted by inequity. And whereas domestic, domestic violence includes physical, emotional, social, sexual, spiritual, financial, and digital abuse and can occur between family members, intimate partners, and within dating relationships. And whereas more than one in three women and one in four men in the United States report having experienced domestic violence, stalking, sexual assault, or physical assault by an intimate partner during their lifetime. And whereas domestic violence impacts vulnerable victims, including children, as approximately fifty percent of Washington County children who are child abuse victims also live in homes with domestic violence. And whereas multiple scientific and medical studies show that trauma, especially for children who experience what is known as adverse childhood experiences or ACEs, increases the likelihood that the individual may struggle with addiction, mental health, or other challenges later in life. And whereas the Family Justice Center and Domestic Violence Resource Center provides crisis services to survivors. And whereas our Washington County community has united together to address the impact of all forms of family violence, including domestic, uh, including domestic violence, child abuse, and neglect, and is working to establish a new facility called the Family Peace Center of Washington County. And whereas domestic violence incidences are some of the most complex and dangerous incidences that law enforcement responds to in our community, putting their lives at risk every day in the belief that a coordinated community response is necessary to support survivors, hold offenders accountable, and work towards ending the cycle of violence. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month pro, provides an excellent platform to show support for the domestic violence advocates, crisis hotline staff, victim service organizations, the prosecutors who hold offenders accountable, and law enforcement officers in our community, and provides that citizens of Washington County the opportunity to learn more about preventing domestic violence and show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, resources, hope, and assistance to victims. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jamie Fender, Mayor of City of King City, do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-three as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Proudly proclaim, I should add. Reading such a proclamation always seems like there should be something following it to conclude. However, we just simply move on to the agenda. So, uh, I always like to highlight uh the Family Justice Center, soon to be the uh Family Peace Center of Washington County. We applaud them for all the things that they do for our community. Um, and with that, we will move on to the Chief's report. Chief Happel.
So, I'll just piggyback on the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Uh, so all the three active white patrol cars already have the purple domestic violence ribbons that are large and on, on their hoods. They're back and then along with October being that month, we also have Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And so, we're actually making some uniform changes for the month of October. So, you'll see most of the staff, I think we won, so you'll see.
Oh, nice.
A back patch on their outfits that are, those pink, you'll see their name tag and, uh, you know, police burn tag will also be pink, it's there. And then we also added, um, for the month, the shoulder patch will only be the golden blue, but it'll be pink and blue. And we've added the ribbons as well there, so that was the design that was done by a husband here within the city.
Nice.
That we had done, so we're doing that as well for the month. So, you'll see that little, little uniform change for that. Maybe next year we'll go as far as doing pink shirts, I don't know, we got a lot of that. We're working on that one. Uh, so, there we go for that one. Uh, Lexapro law continues seven to ten policies a week that have been pushing out. We have a minor computer which slows down by a week, but uh it continues to roll out. Completely, um, over to uh the staff. And, um, about it. And we do, I know that we had an update, I don't know that I've been here and talked about. Um, one of the officers was involved in the rescue of Eddie Doze. Over in Tuolotin, the shooting occurred over there. And so, he actually got to meet with him today, which is really cool.
Wonderful.
So, it's kind of a chance to get out of the chaos and be into a little, you know, different situation. So, it was good to see that officer kind of, Mr. He got to meet with him today. Out of the sheriff's office, so that's neat. He's incredible man, it's, uh, was injured very badly and it's good to see him trying to work his way back in there. Amazing. Um, and, an update on the new car. It shows up, it shows up. That's kind of what I told everybody. And so, there's nothing new on that team. And that's about all I have to know.
Chief, and now, uh, I'll, I'll jump in and, uh, first, uh, again, we applaud, uh, your officers and everything they've done. I, I know, uh, besides, uh, Officer Smalkey, uh, and I did not pronounce his name correctly there, I apologize. Uh, there has been lots of, uh, pretty amazing kind of things. I, I, I hear from the grapevine that we'll have some awards, uh, coming down the line and so forth, uh, at some point in the future. Uh, but you guys are doing a great job. I know one concern from the community that we're hearing a lot of is about the graffiti. Could you give us kind of a little update about, uh, the horrific graffiti that we've experienced last summer? And I know you're working with many agencies around and it's a very unfortunately co, complicated problem just because they, it's like whack-a-milling, right? But, could you just talk to us a little bit?
It, it is, and so it's, you know, you, you'll get the tags that are, you know, there are identifying tags. And so, you're, unfortunately, you, you get to where you kind of have, somebody's got to get caught by, whether it's another agency that does it. You can then relate the tag back to the others. I mean, there's been, I mean, our damage has been minute compared to what Tiger got. You know, especially in their kind of big downtown quarter, you know, early prolific Tiger there. And so, you know, it's just working, we're working with their analysts quite a bit. And unfortunately, what happens is, is we're on two different management systems. And so, I'm, we're the only, we're, we tie it up with sheriff's office. And Sheriff with Tuolotin and Tiger are on something called Mark forty-three. And so, Mark forty-three refuses to sell me a license for where I could pull up all reports from a neighboring agency where I could type in, you know, graffiti and I could pull all the reports from other agencies, I can't get them. And so, I have to rely on Tiger, my analyst, who, you know, we have a great relationship with, but you also know that she's got work to do for some. There's much information possible. And so, sometimes we could be involved in something and we don't have a mitigation system that says, hey, you just tripped over somebody's suspect in, you know, something. And so, it, it gets rather frustrating. I'm going to make another run of Mark forty-three when I see him in January, but they've been very reluctant to try to, to sell the license. I'm like, I just want one. And, and so, I, I've actually talked to a couple of cities about, hey, can you just, I'll buy the computer and you just slap it on. And this is, we're trying to do something, one, one, where it's just a little bit more information sharing because they all have licenses for me and they can pull up everything that we do, but I can't pull up what they do. And so, it's, it's kind of a, it's an interesting little problem.
Yeah.
And so, and so, it's, it's just ongoing and it's, you know, it's, it's bad. We tried to get out there and, uh, you know, we put a little more emphasis on officers, especially late night officers getting out there. We've had to, uh, and we're just trying to block out the, the driveway to the park.
Yeah, the park is getting closed tonight, I saw that, yeah.
Um, we add another measure that I'm not going to mention publicly. Um, you know, to try to, you know, identify suspects a little bit more. And so, it's just, it's a work in progress.
And I, I also, uh, I, I've shared this at a few of the HOA meetings that we've come to, but for anyone listening, that, uh, Metro has a new grant program for, uh, removing graffiti in neighborhoods and it's specifically designed for eight, like HOAs and so forth to apply for. Uh, because, um, unfortunately, we, we remove the graffiti, you know, David's out, Dave Brinian, our Public Works Director is out almost immediately when the graffiti happens. But, um, that is mu, much more challenging for our HOAs, especially some of our HOAs that, um, right have, uh, maybe, uh, not as much, uh, support, uh, staff, you know, or volunteers and so forth. So, uh, thank you for, uh, thank you for everything that's up there. There we are. Uh, any other questions to Chief Happel before we move on to Mike?
I have a question.
Okay.
Why won't Mark forty-three sell you a license?
That's a great question, basically. I've asked, you know, it's probably a bit for not going in in the first place and stuff because basically what would happen is through our regional reporting services, we contract with the sheriff's office and they do our record. And so, I would have to still file this licensing and I'd still have to pay another agency to report management. Uh, and so, I just ran into a financial issue where it's like, I'm paying too much money for something that's going on. So, these licenses that they do, they usually do them in big, like, bunches, you know, where it's, it's a bunch of licenses that they, I think when we were, when all these agencies were going in, they were going in on Marion County contract. They were, it was like sale in Marion County, I think Sappus was in on it for a while, other regions. But it was, it was, it was a bunch of different agencies from all over that kind of went in on this one group purchase. And so, they, they kind of have been open to, to me because I've actually sat there and just moved right to their booth. I said, we need somebody to license. And so, it's, I kind of do the same thing where I'm like, look, you're actually putting us, you know, behind the angle. I don't want to say putting us in danger, but we're missing information. And to where it's like, I've got to put pressure on, you know, another person to try to provide that information. And that's not fair. And so, it's like, I'm probably so tired, so send me a bill, you know? That's what you got to do for, for us calling up and, and utilizing their analysts. But it's just, they haven't provided a real good reason other than, yeah, we're just not going to keep it alive. And so, it's, that's kind of how it's been. And we'll just keep plugging away and I'll put them together.
Well, let me know if I or if we want to get together and take an outside of the box, uh, pressure. That, it is disappointing to hear that, so I will state that publicly right here and now that, uh, that is a disappointing response from a, from that, um, organization. So, hopefully we, in the future, we will get them to move their position.
Yeah.
All right. Um, other questions for Chief Happel? All right, moving on to City Manager's Report.
Thank you, it's great.
Yeah.
Uh, so, I'm going to say, uh, I'm going to be on the HOA meeting last week. Uh, Counselor Petrie, Sarah Swell, uh, we gave, uh, some question about what we've been working on for citywide. Uh, I attempted to go to the League of Oregon City Small Cities today, but I could barely make out every other fifth word. So, uh, I'll leave that to Counselor Petrie to fill us in on that. Uh, the trail at the park, um, we had a little fiasco with the sprinkler system down there and David told them not to turn it on and they turned it on and it caught everything wet. So, now they're worried that they, that we're going to get it compacted in time to pave tomorrow. So, uh, anyways, we're going to see how it is tomorrow morning and if it's paved, they'll pave. Uh, but, uh, anyways, it's just one thing after another. It was the root barrier for one and then the brakes and the irrigation system were two. And now, like, we told them not to turn it on and then our landscapers turned it on. So, it ended up getting it too wet now. So, um, they're concerned that it won't compact properly now. So, uh, we'll, we'll see the drive up. And, uh, with that, you guys know everything else that's going on, so I'm not even going to dive into it.
All right. Uh, let's start with Counselor Moore. Uh, do you have any reports that you want to provide as he?
Sorry, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, apologies, I, I knew Counselor Moore, um, I heard it from, uh, earlier, she had a fire coming. So, uh, moving on, we will go to, um, Counselor Petrie.
I have a couple of things. Um, first of all, just to let you know, MPAC and JPAC were on hiatus for the month of August, so do not have reports for them. Um, I just had the LLC Small Cities meeting this morning. Um, and they just give legislative update on things that they've been working on for us. Uh, a couple of things of interest to us is that, uh, they are still trying to get, um, money more in a grant uh, capacity for cities for infrastructure. The, uh, state did fund, uh, put thirty million more dollars into a fund for low interest loans. But LLC is still trying to get money that's not necessarily a loan. Uh, they just talked about funding for homelessness, uh, some of the things to address for that, which have, that's at the moment. They are still trying to address the, um, shortcomings in Measure one-ten. I asked him specifically, um, what was happening with the, the whole thing of backfilling from the, the missing money that to the city, what that happened with one-ten. And he just said, you know, they're still working and trying to do that, but he doesn't see anything happening on that anytime soon, unfortunately. Um, the other thing of interest was, uh, for me is that they were talking a little bit about the, the broadband legislation that's coming down gradually and how some of that might impact us. Um, there's going to be opportunities to, uh, register for fiber security funds. That might be something we would be interested in. Uh, also that the, um, kind of start talking about broadband permitting and, um, what things that, you know, for Kingston Terrace, what we might want to do in terms of, of adding, expanding broadband into that area. And it looks like there might be some options, this is what's interesting to me, was that there might be some grant offer, um, options. And there also might be some in literacy, um, digital literacy components of this where you would be able to get funds to provide, like, those workshops, that sort of thing that would help folks with their, coming up into, and I thought, well, that would be great for us.
Okay, wonderful.
A lot of folks that are slacking in that area. So, um, also the one thing of interest was, we have what, one hotel that we have a housing tax? Um, they are still working on trying to get more flexibility on that. Um, they're trying to get it so that the, um, funds that are collected do not have to specifically be used for, uh, tra, uh, tourist applications and that they could be used more for things that might be helpful to a tourist. So, instead of just using it for promotion, the money that comes in, you could use it for, say, a new restroom at the park or something along those lines. That hasn't happened yet, but they're still working on that. Um, whatever hopeful of the next session.
Absolutely.
Things will be different. But they do strongly encourage, and I know a mayor is very good at this, strongly encourage all of us to participate with our representatives and our senators and our other folks to make them aware of what it is we need at this level. So, um, whatever we can do to help with that helps LLC. How, how to make that happen too. The only other thing I wanted to mention, because we had another successful blood drive.
Yeah.
And I wanted to give major kudos to Mr. Smith. He pulls this all together, makes it happen, ordinates with the, with the Red Cross, gets all of us volunteers together and makes it come together and work out well. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Wonderful. Wonderful, thank you. Uh, Smart?
Oh, I have not had much to report today, um, for the, the word, but I actually made, made it stupid from the ninth of August. I missed that because of, uh, conflict. But I should made, made it a stupid comment, nine to five, I missed that because of conflict. When I tried to get the minutes, and I still, because of changing the person that was doing the minutes, she retired and there's a new person, so we're still trying to figure out how to make sure she gets the minutes out to everyone. I'm still working out with them. But out of the, I got the report for the July water usage, and we kind of had a little bit of increase from the previous years. And so that was reported, the CQ, daily use was a little bit more than compared to previous days. We can have coming season, the rains and the snow and everything to kind of help with any kind of concern that might be there. But even we still have some of the, the water that we can also depend on now from the coffee going here to see the saloon, so no more concern there. Next meeting is October 11th, so time to be there.
Good, thank you. Counselor Mano?
I have no report.
Okay. Counselor, report.
Just one little thing to report. We had the Policy Advisory Board for the block grants meeting last week, and we approved the draft caper, and that is the, I'm going to have it wrong, so I just want to have it up here. That's the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Basically, we approved the draft caper. Some of the highlights of it were that we are still seeing a lot of impact from supply chain issues and some of the remnants of the COVID pandemic with regards to the projects meeting completion, and some of the programs being able to serve the members of the community that they are intended to. So a lot of the projects fell short of their goals this year, and much of the focus is on improvements for, for the following year.
Counselor Thompson?
I have an opportunity for someone here. I'm unable to attend the LLC's annual conference next month.
Mm-hmm.
I'm wondering if I'm allowed to go in.
I would like to go. It's October 12th to the 14th.
Yeah. And I see, have, have Diane get signed up yet? I can't remember who is my, I think I can't, or mine.
Is it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Laurie? I think.
Was it you and Smart?
Can't remember.
It's either Laurie or Smart.
Yeah. Who would like to go to Eugene to the LLC? I definitely think one of us needs to be there.
Will it be you?
Maybe we should.
And Eugene.
It's in Eugene, October. So let's do this. Let's continue the discussion and figure out who is going to attend, maybe talk to your families, and see who can go, but definitely King City should be there, so.
I'm not sure why, but I just pull up the website, it says, register by September 22nd.
So, yeah, they will let us register after that. However, we should try to get in on the date. Yes, let's be responsible. So please, talk to your families this evening or tomorrow early, and then get back to Ronnie or, or Mike in the next day or two.
Essentially, may stay Thursday, Friday.
Thursday, Friday.
Thursday, Friday. Mm-hmm. Yeah. And the agenda, take a look at the agenda, you guys, it's a good, it's a good one this year. As always, it's always good, but there's some interesting stuff on.
Are you able to attend if one of, if the?
I, yeah, I can attend if no one else can attend, but I definitely think someone else, if you are interested in going and you haven't been before, I encourage you. So please feel free to, to, you know. I will be our, I will be our backup.
Perfect, thank you. That's all.
All right. As for me, the la, the last month, I guess it was a little quieter somewhat, so MMC and the WCCC meetings, I was not able to go to the WCCC meetings this week, although I went to the executive meeting the week prior, because I'm the vice chair. So lots of discussions over kind of tolling, what now, right? Question mark, still kind of, so I think there's some good presentations that we'll get to have present here to some of, you know, to us in the next couple of coming months. We had a good presentation from the City of Sherwood on their commercial expansion that's coming down the pipeline. They also are tackling this, you know, I think we all recall the difficulty that Sherwood had a few years ago. They ended up withdrawing their expansion and decided to take pause and make a go of it a little bit later. And so they have been going around to the other cities and presenting their kind of vision and plans, and this is, it's an interesting presentation. So they may request to come here, I'm not sure, but it would make sense that they would, so we can look forward to that. And I don't have too much else. Mike already touched upon, we went to the HOA meeting. School is now back in session. I wanted to just highlight the fact that I've been very impressed with the traffic and the, I, I haven't had too much feedback on kind of some of those back to school issues that we have seen in the, in the years past, where kind of residents forget it's back to school, and then all of a sudden there's traffic, and everyone's really upset. There, I haven't seen huge backups at, at school drop off and pickup. So I think everyone's weathering school return a little better this year than in years prior. Other news, if you haven't heard or you are unaware, there are fun cautions, very fun caution, very visible fencing that has gone up all along 131st. For those unaware, it's because the Deer Creek School property has a significant problem with poison oak, and they have hired goats to come and eat it all. So there is an electrified fence along, all down 131, and during the day you will see the cute goats eating all of the, all of the poisonous shrubbery that's there, and they're working, they're doing a really good job. They are really clearing significant things. I have heard from my son that Ms. Waffle, president, excuse me, principal at Deer Creek, has said that the goats are going to be there for a couple of months, and I was not aware of that. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but that was what I have been informed. But we look forward to that. There are several fun events with the school that are coming up, so if you don't follow Deer Creek's social media, I encourage you to do that, because there's some fun things that are available in the community, like some Halloween events and other things. So we welcome back to school. With that, anything else for the good of the order?
Adjourn to.
Yeah, so we are going to go into executive session, so I will entertain a motion to close the council meeting, and then I will do the preamble for executive session. So we are going into an executive session.
Maybe a five minute.
And we will take a five minute break in between. So let's first close public, the council meeting.
Move to close the regular council meeting.
Okay. All right, all of us in favor, raise your hand. The motion carries, the city council meeting is now adjourned. The city council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of meeting with a legal counsel who is here this evening with us. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602H, which allows the council to meet in executive session to discuss with the attorney under the attorney-client privilege. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed to not report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. We will now go into executive session in five minutes, and thank you, everyone.